The 3:30 PM meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular city council meeting of August 14, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Councilmember Arias.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call in the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts a meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one public speaker's card for items not listed on today's agenda. The first public speaker is Walter Keenan.
Thank you. And for the record, Vice Mayor entered at 3:32. Welcome, Mr. Keenan.
Thank you. Just in history, I spoke originally spoke at the city council meeting on July 10 about a property in my neighborhood operating as an Airbnb full-time, which in essence is an illegal hotel-type operation. I returned on the 7/24 meeting to comment on the action needed by the council in this matter. At that meeting, Vice Mayor Gonzalez and Councilmember Freeman assertively voiced their support that existing laws, including this one, should be enforced, which at that point it wasn't. At this point, I believe it was the mayor who then asked the city manager if he had any questions. Mr. Clegg said, no, he understood the direction from the council. Subsequently, to that meeting, I reached out to various individuals in the city departments and was ultimately referred to Mr. David Paquette, who was the code enforcement manager. Mr. Paquette has been very responsive and has actively looking at ways to assist me and my neighborhood in this matter. I only returned today to this meeting to express my appreciation for the role any and all of you have had in raising this concern to the level where some action is being taken. So, very honestly, I thank you very much. Thank you both, you gentlemen, for voicing your support at that meeting. And Mr. Clegg, thank you for the follow-through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
For the first time, I'm under time.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers who are not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have one speaker card for item 3A. Did you want to take those comments after staff's presentation?
Yes, we will. And now, next item, please.
Reports item 3A, community choice ag.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Assistant City Manager Gary Helen will provide a brief introduction to this topic, and then our partners that have prepared this report will share the report with you.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Gary Helen, Assistant City Manager. We previously had a presentation before this council a year ago on a very high-level overview of what a CCA is. We had a presentation from Mr. Woody Hastings on, you know, 50,000-foot level of what are CCAs. We got your direction to move forward and investigate these further. So, we have hired Andrew Belknap with Baker Tilly to give us that assessment of what he's done in regards to CCA, really looking at, does this make sense for Bakersfield? How does it make sense? Also, we got some direction from this council on what other cities do. You know, who's doing this successfully? How are they doing it? We did some deeper dive into what CCAs are, and I think I want to just share three or four kind of major takeaways from a high-level perspective. Some of the discussion at the last council meeting was, is this really going to be a rate savings for our residents? And primarily, when cities look at this, it's not typically for saving customers, you know, 25% or a very large percentage. There is nominal percentage reduction on bills historically for CCAs. Primarily, the goal is to have local control and to be able to make decisions at a council level on energy and specifically this effort. Also, entities do this for economic development purposes. Typically, CCAs ultimately have programs to incentivize economic development and to bring those programs to the local businesses, to residents, also to do some business attraction for larger development. So, that's typical from other entities. And I think the largest thing, and this is where I want to end, and then I'll have Mr. Belknap take over the presentation based on his assessment, it really gives us a lever point we've not ever had. I don't want to say anything bad.
The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of August 14, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call in the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts a meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one public speaker's card for items not listed on today's agenda. The first public speaker is Walter Keenan.
Thank you. And for the record, Vice Mayor entered at 3:32. Welcome, Mr. Keenan.
Thank you. Just in history, I spoke originally spoke at the City Council meeting on July 10 about a property in my neighborhood, operating as an Airbnb full-time, which in essence is an illegal hotel-type operation. I returned on the 7:24 meeting to comment on the action needed by the council in this matter. At that meeting, Vice Mayor Gonzalez and Councilmember Freeman assertively voiced their support that existing laws, including this one, should be enforced, which at that point it wasn't. At this point, I believe it was the mayor who then asked the city manager if he had any questions. Mr. Clegg said no, he understood the direction from the council. Subsequently to that meeting, I reached out to various individuals in the city departments and was ultimately referred to Mr. David Paquette, who was the code enforcement manager. Mr. Paquette has been very responsive and has actively looking at ways to assist me and my neighborhood in this matter. I only returned today to this meeting to express my appreciation for the role any and all of you have had in raising this concern to the level where some action is being taken. So very honestly, I thank you very much. Thank you both, you gentlemen, for voicing your support at that meeting. And Mr. Clegg, thank you for the follow-through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
For the first time, I'm under time.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers who are not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have one speaker card for item 3A. Did you want to take those comments after staff's presentation?
Yes, we will. And now, next item, please.
Reports item 3A, Community Choice Ag.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Assistant City Manager Gary Helen will provide a brief introduction to this topic, and then our partners that have prepared this report will share the report with you.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Gary Helen, Assistant City Manager. We previously had a presentation before this council a year ago on a very high-level overview of what a CCA is. We had a presentation from Mr. Woody Hastings on, you know, 50,000-foot level of what are CCAs. We got your direction to move forward and investigate these further. So we have hired Andrew Belknap with Baker Tilly to give us that assessment of what he's done in regards to CCA, really looking at, does this make sense for Bakersfield? How does it make sense? Also, we got some direction from this council on what other cities do. You know, who's doing this successfully? How are they doing it? We did some deeper dive into what CCAs are, and I think I want to just share three or four kind of major takeaways from a high-level perspective. Some of the discussion at the last council meeting was, is this really going to be a rate savings for our residents? And primarily when cities look at this, it's not typically for saving customers, you know, 25% or a very large percentage. There is nominal percentage reduction on bills historically for CCAs. Primarily, the goal is to have local control and to be able to make decisions at a council level on energy and specifically this effort. Also, entities do this for economic development purposes. Typically, CCAs ultimately have programs to incentivize economic development and to bring those programs to the local businesses, to residents, also to do some business attraction for larger development. So that's typical from other entities. And I think the largest thing, and this is where I want to end, and then I'll have Mr. Belknap take over the presentation based on his assessment, it really gives us a lever point we've not ever had. I don't want to say anything bad about our partners at PG&E. They are good partners. In fact, they're here today. I invited them to come and listen to the presentation. But what this does is it gives us a tool in our tool belt to be able to have a place to move development potentially faster. Some of the, one of the highest goals of this council is to be more business-friendly. So with the CCA, we have that tool to be able to sit at the table with a PG&E and be able to say, we now have a CCA. We have a lever point that we've not had before to utilize on moving projects faster, to help generate additional power to where it can't be generated, and to use that as a strategic advantage for us in Bakersfield to kind of lead out in this effort. So with that, I'll turn portion of this presentation over to Mr. Belknap.
Thank you, Gary. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm Andy Belknap with Baker Tilly, and I'll go through this PowerPoint and then answer any questions that you might have. So we did conduct a survey-level assessment of a community choice aggregation program, CCA for electrical service in Bakersfield, and what that might mean for the city. So we're going to go over what the CCA landscape looks like in California and what, how CCAs have a relationship with investor-owned utilities, how they're formed and function, rates, and how rates typically compare with investor-owned utilities, the potential benefits of a CCA, the risks and uncertainties that are associated with CCAs, and then the Bakersfield setting, and the pros and cons here in Bakersfield, and possible next steps. So although the CCA, the law that allowed for CCAs was actually passed in California way back in 2004, it took a while for the first CCA to be formed, and that came about in 2010. But since then, they've been on kind of a roll, and now about 27% of the state's population is actually served in terms of electrical generation by a CCA. There's 183 cities and 18 counties now that are part of a CCA, and there are 26 CCAs that are active in California. And they actually procure about 28% of the electrical load that is served via the three big investor-owned utilities, which are PG&E, Southern California Edison, and San Diego Gas and Electric. Customers are initially subscribed into a new CCA after it's approved by the California Public Utilities Commission, but it's important to recognize that they can opt out and go back to the investor-owned utility if they want to. This slide shows a map of the territory, areas of the existing CCAs in California. This is courtesy of an organization called the CalCCA, which is an association of the existing CCAs in the state. And the green are the operational CCA, and the gray are those that are considering formation of a CCA. And then the orange is an area where they filed their implementation plan. It's being considered by the California CPUC. So in terms of how a CCA is formed and function, local governments, such as the city of Bakersfield, are authorized under state law to create an implementation plan. And I will show you what is contained in the implementation plan in a minute or so, and then file that with the California Public Utilities Commission. And then the California Public Utilities Commission holds hearings and will approve that with possible amendments after they review it. This implementation plan is essentially a business plan of how the CCA will function. It lays out things like the organizational structure of the new CCA. It's typically set up as either a department of the local government, which is forming the CCA, or it's often done as part of a joint powers authority. There are several joint powers authority within the state that operate CCAs. And then in terms of how the CCAs function, they exist solely to procure wholesale electricity, and they often emphasize procurement of renewable energy. They don't have to do that, but that's often a mission that they have, and then sell it to retail customers. The investor-owned utilities continue to be responsible for the distribution and transmission and metering of the electricity. So the customers, as I mentioned, are initially transferred to the CCA, but they can opt out. The, as I mentioned, the IOUs continue to operate transmission and distribution. So how does the local government work within the context of a CCA? One of the most important roles that local government has is rate setting. And so that would be a role that the city of Bakersfield would take on. As Gary mentioned, there typically is a small rate setting. If you look at the CCAs across the state, it's typically between 3% and 9%. It's not huge, but there's typically some rate savings. There are also various local economic development opportunities. The CCAs can often be perhaps a little bit more nimble, and they can work with your city economic development organization to work with business and industry when it comes to generating electricity as part of a project. One of the things that a lot of CCAs point to is they strive for long-term rate stability for residents and businesses, exercising through the local control of the city council. They often point also to the benefits from renewable energy options that they provide to local residents, which again is not a must-do, it's an option. They often offer a menu of choices so that local customers can choose from different types of energy, 100% green energy or some other choices. I mentioned rate savings. One of the CCAs, they have an incentive to deliver some rate savings because they want to keep the customers within the CCA. They don't want to give them an incentive to opt out. They want to try to keep them within the CCA. In Bakersfield, Bakersfield would be a large CCA. There's a lot of electrical load here. The other thing about Bakersfield is it's a very fertile environment for power generation, particularly from solar. It's one of, I think you, I'm sure you already know this, it's one of the, it's an excellent location for solar projects, one of the best in the United States. And you have a number of projects that are already underway. And the close working relationship between a CCA and the city in terms of electrical power generation might be a nice economic development element. And there's just a number of projects here that are already underway that would be nice to add, and that power would go directly to the CCA and then be made available to residents. And these are some of the future projects that the city is already working on. And many of the, another nice synergy between the city and the CCA is a number of these projects have been awarded some grant funding that the city has been able to procure. So that's another way to help, I guess, underwrite the cost of generating the electricity. The CCA can directly procure the energy that comes from these projects. So in wrapping it up here, some of the pros and cons when looking at this from Bakersfield's perspective, one of the pros would include local control. You'd have greater local control over electrical generation and say, when it comes to rate setting, there would be some potential for economic development benefits. There would be some potential for energy generation potential, particularly, especially solar. Potential for rate savings. There'd be an opportunity to set up some local energy efficiency programs, and more leverage on local energy issues or closer working relationship between the city and the CCA when it comes to energy generation projects. Now, there's also some uncertainty and some cons. The complexity of a CCA shouldn't be understated. The implementation plan is going to run over 100 pages. It's going to be pretty complicated. It's going to be another complicated role for the city council to undertake. The rate setting is a complicated undertaking. There is regulatory uncertainty. There's some differences of opinion, as you can imagine, between the investor-owned utilities and the CalPUC and the collection of CCAs that exist in the state. So there's pushing and pulling, and therefore some regulatory uncertainty. And there's also, this is an additional business the city would be taking on. I know you already have a lot on your plate, and this would be adding to that. And there have been a couple of CCA failures in the state where they've had to wind down their operations. But I would hasten to add that there's, to my knowledge, there's only been two, and they have both been small, arguably under efficient scale CCAs. But there have been instances of failure, and that needs to be taken into account. The next steps for Bakersfield, should you choose to move ahead, would be to develop an implementation plan pursuant to the CPUC regulations and state law. We would broadly estimate those costs as being between $75,000 and $200,000. We've had some initial discussions about doing this, and actually, we think that the cost may be closer to the lower end. There's some peculiarity in terms of scheduling how the CPUC looks at these implementation plans. So an implementation plan has got to be submitted by January 1, the year prior to a CCA becoming operational. So if you want to be operational in 2026, you need to file the implementation plan by January 1 of 2025. If you wanted to do it in 2027, then you have a little bit more time. And this just steps you through, I'm sorry, it's kind of a little bit small, but this steps you through what those state law requirements are and the implementation plan section that would speak to that legal requirement. And luckily, we don't have to create the wheel here. There's plenty of implementation plans that we can go look at. But they are fairly complicated, particularly when you look at the rate-setting component and the procurement process component. They get into a fair amount of detail about, you know, how you're going to do this. Generally speaking, when it comes to procurement of electricity, that's highly specialized. Most of the CCAs will use vendors or consultants to actually do the procurement work. It's highly technical work. But the implementation plan will go into that in detail. And these are the things that have to be covered. It probably will take, it'll take some specialized consultants to help you write the implementation plan. It'll take six to eight weeks to get it done. It's, like I said, about a 100-page piece of work when it's all done. But luckily, it's all been done before, and there's plenty that can be looked at. So I'd like to open it up for any questions or comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Belknap. City Manager Clegg, any comments before we go to the public?
Mayor, we've had a couple of good summarizations. I would just reiterate for council that we have some options in timing. This is something that we obviously can move forward in the near term, if we're trying to meet certain deadlines. But also would reflect that this is, when we look at the city council goals and our work plan, this is relevant to one of our objective statements about trying to create more energy independence and trying to create more energy production related to that, and some of our economic development goals. But I do see this as a longer-term strategy that could pay important dividends, and that it's important to lay the groundwork and the foundation for those strategies. But I wouldn't, if you were to ask, you know, if this was an urgent issue, I think that the answer is no, but we do, you know, feel like, you know, continue to set this foundation in place and put in motion for these long-term plans, that there's benefits there to be leveraged. In particular, as noted, our own production of our own solar facilities. We think that we're going to increase the amount of solar and other energy production that we're going to pursue as a city, and we get to capture all those benefits if it comes into our own CCA. But from a timing standpoint, I think we have some options. And so we did lay that out, that we, you know, we can move forward quickly, but we can also take this into this next coming year. I would also share that there's not just one way to do this. We explored some options, and we're prepared to speak to those and through some of the questions and discussion, that the city can form its own aggregator. We could join other aggregators. We could also, again, over time, be able to look at how, you know, some of the regulatory uncertainties unfold and pursue CCA into the future as well. But again, this was in response to the council referrals specific to the topic, but also it's related to some aspects of our goals and long-term plans.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. We'll go to the public now before coming back to council. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the public speaker?
Michael Turnipseed.
Unless you want me to read that whole thing really fast?
And Madam City Clerk, for the record, Councilmember Cor entered at 3:41.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. I did a little research on this issue today, and I summarized it on the paper so you could read it, the challenges it actually face CCAs. My numbers are a little different than the gentleman presented. When I asked how many have failed or aren't operations actually started, the number is seven, which in seven, which included the Western Community Energy, City of Santa Paula, City of Hanford, City of Commerce, Buick Clean Energy, City of Montebello, and Baldwin Park. And there are four additional ones that have been organized but never gotten off the ground, including the King's Resource District here. I don't know if that's the City of Hanford or not, but it's been over the King's Resource District. So if you take those 11 and add them to the 19 that are running today, that's like a 35% didn't work. That's a pretty high percentage. This is a very complicated game, let alone the fact that you have a franchise agreement that was done in 2010, I think. We, in exchange for a utility tax negotiated with PG&E of 1%, I think they have an evergreen contract. Is that correct, Madam Attorney? Yes, it's evergreen. So it's not a 50-year franchise agreement. Bakersfield gave it away forever. So I'm sure there's legal ramifications here. I haven't been around long enough to see these things. So the question is, it might be litigation because you'd be breaking your franchise agreement. And the fact is, you think you're going to have better delivery of services? PG&E is still going to be regulated on the transmission and delivery side. If the PUC doesn't authorize them to put more wires and transformers and all the things they have to do to move electricity, it's not going to happen anyway. And my clock's down to five seconds, so I'll say thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, any other public speakers on this topic?
Mayor, that was our only speaker card received.
Thank you. And now Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for Mr. Turnipseed. This, your first section is, is very thoughtful. I wrote down a lot of the same questions. All of us would like to have more local control and it sounds great and I'm all for that, you know, if we can figure out how to do it. But what I didn't hear, which I think is what the public wants to hear, is that their rates would go down versus what PG&E would do. Not, not in absolute dollars go down, but PG&E just sent us a few months ago, 6.5% increase. And every year they do it because they were forced by legislation to buy inefficient grid energy until they filed bankruptcy. And then they were going to file bankruptcy a second time, three years later, until recently they said, we'll cut down the repurchase of the solar power by about 50%. That happened on April 13th. My neighbor told me about it, said, if you're going to get solar, you have to get it before April 15th. So I did. And I said, well, you're, the state is driving the citizens, driving the rate increase at legislative level. It's not PG&E. And I feel kind of guilty getting it because, you know, it's about a five-and-a-half-year payback, which is absurd. But, and then within, what is it, six months since April 16th? Sun Solar, the biggest one in the country, that did install mine, just declared bankruptcy last week. Okay? 80% of the solarists stopped immediately when they quit the ridiculous purchase of my energy at three times what it's worth. Okay? What you could buy natural gas for. Okay? So we've been penalizing the citizens and especially the poor citizens with massive increases to subsidize the people who could afford solar. The game's kind of over with Sun Solar declaring bankruptcy and I guess the law will start to fall now because it was such a sweetheart deal, people were doing it. This really addresses procurement of energy. That's, and the distribution stays the same. I was a little worried before the speaker finished that, well, what happens to all the tracks when we got electrifying with new housing tracks? I guess that stays in PG&E's hands, I'm assuming, from what was explained. They're not doing a very good job and we wish we had leverage over it because it's very frustrating when everything's done in a tract or a new industrial project and it cannot move forward. It stops because PG&E says, we don't have time to get to it and we have no choices. So I would like some choices, but this is simply on the procurement of the energy source. So, I'm not blaming this, it doesn't solve most of our problems with PG&E. The other thing that PG&E is being forced to do, but I guess they're backing off, that it said, well, let's have a, somewhat, you can have a bias toward renewable energy because of where you look at it. Well, I just want the energy to be, when you bid, the lowest-priced supplier. I don't want to overpay and then charge our citizens, which are not a wealthy group of citizens, more and more for the utilities bill. So my, if we were to move forward with this, I want a policy, you go for the lowest-priced source of energy. I don't care whether it's solar or natural gas or bio or whatever it is. And maybe in this region, you have a chance for some sweetheart deals from those providers because there's a lot of major installations. That might be an advantage to us of doing this, but it is a huge undertaking and I just wish, I know my neighbor's going to say, well, are my rates going to go down? And when I say, probably not, they're going to say, well, why are you doing it? And I said, for local control. And they said, well, what are you getting out of local control? And I don't have a good answer. That may be because I don't understand this well enough. I'm not saying abandon this tonight at all, trying to keep an open mind. I'm just saying it's a big hill to climb over. And I do expect retaliation from PG&E. I mean, they're going to find ways to hurt you. You could ask some of the other cities though. And I guess that's, I guess that's most of my comments. If we did move forward or decide to move further forward, I would really want to have extensive public hearings so that people from the community, and there are some knowledgeable, you know, energy people in our community, I mean, with PhDs who would come and tell us, you learn a lot in public hearings when the right people come, not, not someone like me just saying, I want my rates lower, but someone who's an expert in the field. And public hearings can really surface, can educate us because I don't feel educated yet. I haven't educated myself. And so I think we keep an open mind, but I think we'd be slow and careful about this and really vet it, you know, before we, before we were going to make any sort of final decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Well, I would agree with your comments. Councilmember Freeman, I appreciate that. And Mr. Turnipseed too, for bringing another perspective to the table today. This is not something that I am versed on by any means, but I do have a couple of questions and I do want to ask them, of what percentage of the community, if we were to move forward with this, what percentage of the community is actually going to benefit from all this hard work that's going to be done? And so that's my first question. I have some others.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Gray. Taking aside the question about, you know, what is the sort of degree of benefit of savings, if you're just saying what percentage of the population?
Right.
That would be the entire, you know, populace of the city of Bakersfield. You could actually create, I guess, distinctive boundaries, but as, you know, we've envisioned it, it would be for our entire populace.
Okay.
That's what we see in other communities. You have a citywide CCA and they're automatically opted in and then if, if people want to opt out, they can, but it would be offered to the entire city.
So they wouldn't have to agree, they would, they would automatically be, I would automatically be part of the CCA whether I wanted it or not and then I'd have to opt out. Instead of opting in, you have to opt out.
Right.
Okay. I've never liked opt-out in anything. When my kids were in school and they said, this is a program, they're going to begin it automatically unless you send a note to say they're not going to be. That didn't register well with me as a parent. So I see that happening and that could cause a lot of issues right there. The other thing that really worried me in this is when I saw that we would have to establish a department, another department in our city government to be able to do this.
That, that actually would be a choice. There's a number of organizational arrangements that you could pursue. I think I mentioned there are a number of joint powers authorities in the state that you could affiliate with. That would be another way to do it.
If I, if I may follow up on that though, I think one of the concerns, Councilmember, is, well, two in my mind, is just, you know, how do we fund that additional operation? As well as, you know, if it were, you know, for example, a city department, that just, you know, additional, you know, long-term overhead for the city.
Right.
Like other utilities, I wouldn't recommend pursuing an aggregator like this unless it was treated like an enterprise where the revenues that are going to be generated with the purchase and sale of power can support the costs of that operation. And so it would be essentially, it would be rate-supported. We wouldn't have to pull from the general fund. We wouldn't have to pull from other funding sources for the city for this operation. Otherwise, I wouldn't recommend it to the council. I do think it's fair to state that if it were a department versus, let's say, a joint powers authority, that there is some level of administrative, also just, you know, responsibility, even if it's self-funding, there's a certain amount of, you know, council time on setting those rates annually and city staff time on, you know, putting those on agendas. But for the most part, it's an independent, either joint powers authority or a department that would be run like an enterprise that wouldn't have additional city costs to it.
Okay. So thinking about it in those terms, then what percentage of the city would have to stay in it in order to cover the overhead? And that's where, that's where the tricky part is in here, where the failure could come because all of a sudden you need 75% to participate and now you only have 50%.
Yeah, we haven't, we, we don't have those numbers today. The next phase of the additional, like deeper fiscal analysis that was referenced, that could be somewhere between 75 and $200,000 would answer that question.
That's where I have a hard time because I think that, I'm kind of with our Councilmember Freeman here, that I don't feel like we have enough information to really make an educated decision. So with that 75 to $200,000 investment, we're gambling our taxpayers' money to be able to come up with that information. It seems like there's, would be a better way to do that than make that investment. So I, I don't feel like we're ready to really be able to come to a decision tonight that you're asking us for when we're just kind of throwing out a couple hundred thousand dollars on the table and say, let's figure it out from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
I really, I mean, the vision that I had and the recommendation, and I've spoke with a consultant and I've spoke with the city manager's office multiple times, the real vision for this is not what was presented. What was presented is buy wholesale, sell retail, which is what most of them do. But the city of Bakersfield has a very unique opportunity in that we own thousands of acres of land, the sewer treatment plants and the recharge, that could have multiple uses and those uses potentially could be solar fields. And that's enough solar fields to provide the energy for the entire community, in my rough estimation and research, so that the savings is not a 5% or 9%. But if the, if your total bill is 30 or 40% energy, then the city's in control of that 30 or 40%. And the solar fields have a payback of 15 to 20 years. Then that, according to the consultant we heard the first time, is $125 million, I'm sure it's higher now, a year that instead of going out of the community is reinvested back into the community. It's a big, big economic development, local control concept. But I, I really didn't hear anything from the report that addressed that idea. So I guess my feeling at this point is, yes, we're not ready to, to go forward with application, but I do want to keep an open mind and, and long-term opportunity for Bakersfield to produce its own energy.
If I may, Councilmember Smith, I appreciate the opportunity. Let me also highlight one technical aspect and then speak to your points. If we were to create large solar production in the city today, we're required to essentially pump that straight into the existing grid, an existing investor-owned utility. And it's subject to those rates that we have to negotiate through those entities. We can't necessarily take solar energy or other energy that we may produce and sort of, you know, receive all the benefit of that off the top as the city. It has to go through a utility that is managed by the Public Utilities Commission.
We have a CCA. We can buy it from ourselves.
Correct. That's where I was headed, is that if we have our own CCA, then it can go through the city. And so in acknowledgement of, Councilmember Smith, that is accurate. Not necessarily, the, the biggest wins, we don't assume, are just buying and selling of power. It's actually creating a CCA that would allow us to receive and process our own energy without it necessarily, you know, going through other, you know, providers first. And so we've looked and we noted, you know, in the presentation, several of the energy-producing projects, but, you know, failed to draw that connection that the benefit of those projects will be much higher if we have our own CCA.
Well, those are small compared to what we're talking about. I mean, that's parking lots.
But even, even, even those will have benefits, we think, that are notable. But again, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily realize the full impact of the benefits for these different, you know, projects, let alone larger projects as we start to look at our, our other acreage that the city can do these large projects on. And so I think the, the application process is somewhat similar, but we're not necessarily obligated to, you know, do all of the purchase and sell of wholesale. Even if we form a CCA, we're not obligated to then, you know, you know, do all of that purchase and sale. And so there are some different options, but we, you know, we do need to do further analysis on how we would set that up. And that's part of sort of in the next phase. Appreciate that, that clarification, that there's not just one path forward. We can use a CCA for different benefits.
Well, I also am not in favor of moving forward if it's just a wholesale retail situation. I don't think there's any, there's enough benefit to the city. So, but the opportunities are much, much larger if we are a substantial power provider. And so that's the analysis that I would recommend we move forward on. And I don't know if that's part of the application or you do that completely separately, but what, what are the real opportunities for us being a CCA and providing, you know, thousands of acres essentially of, of solar power?
Well, I think, I think that that's a very specific question that would require some specific sort of engineering analysis that would be best examined in the, the next step, the implementation plan, because there is a section of that that deals with power generation opportunities. And I did want to go back to the question of benefits and try to give you some specifics on the rates. We did examine eight, we did compare rates in eight specific examples within the state of California between CCAs and the investor-owned utilities to try to drill down and get some specifics on the rate benefits that might happen. What we found is that in seven of those eight comparisons, the CCA What we found is that in seven of those eight comparisons, the CCA had a rate advantage, in other words, had lower rates than the investor-owned utility. And these were random comparisons. In one, the rates were the same. The average savings was 5% for the CCA. They ranged from 1% to 16%. So I just wanted to give you that, that data.
I get that. And that's just buying wholesale, selling retail.
I understand. Yeah, it is. It's, you, you, you put it very well. It's the wholesale-retail.
Yeah. And I, I would agree with the other council members that that, by and of itself, is not enough. But I think our opportunities are so much larger than that.
I think that's a point well-taken. I think it's just that a, a, a deeper engineering analysis is necessary to, to understand the generation opportunities here in Bakersfield. But there are some very meaningful generation opportunities here, especially solar.
Right. I mean, it's economic development, it's jobs, it's saving customers' money, it's, it's a lot of things down the road. If it works. And I, you know, at this point, you know, my, my research says that, yes, we own enough acreages, we could provide energy for the whole community.
Indeed. The implementation plan would answer, to a much greater extent, those questions. And our research to date indicates that the cost will be much closer to 75,000 than a 200,000.
Councilmember Smith, anything else?
If I could just add one, yeah, one, one piece to that. Currently, and this is kind of a dual track that we're going down, our Public Works Department is, is doing an RFP for what we're calling an ADC process, which is assess, design, construct on alternative energy projects that would specifically reduce our costs on larger energy-consuming, you know, areas of the city. So, but I think during that assessment, so the A part of that ADC process, will flush out some of these potential projects that could come, whether the CCA is there or not, because we were, we've been considering, you know, this ADC process for quite some time.
Right. But for, in order for the consumers citywide to have an opportunity, then we need the CCA, right?
That is correct.
Mayor, I, you know, Mr. Turnip Seeds, you know, waving his hand, may, may we recognize him.
Mr. Turnip Seed.
Madam Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. Thank you. Every day, millions of kilowatts are sold by the state of California and ISO to Arizona for one cent a kilowatt because we have too much solar and it can't be used when it's produced, and there's not enough storage. And to go out and invest in solar now, and I would think the smartest guy in town is Jess Frederick. You should have him do your presentation. He's been in this. And he told me a story that 20 years ago, he brought a proposal forward to the city to contract with local energy plants, gas plants. There were plants that were being sold, going down, and they could have bought plants for nothing. No, that's about the time when the whole PG&E and the utility tax thing came. And I don't, I know peripherally what happened, but the, the city manager at the time didn't want anything to do with it. But there were golden opportunities that were missed 20 years ago. And one thing about Jess, when he comes and talks, and I think you all know him, he's as straightforward and straight-shooter as it is. He knows everything. He's, if he's not the smartest guy in energy in town, he's number two. Maybe as the boss Mary Jane is, I don't know. But I would recommend that you ask Jess Frederick to come make a presentation on the whole electrical system today as it is in California. Thanks again for allowing me to talk again.
Thank you, Mr. Turnip Seed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I just, to move along, I guess, I, I would make a motion to continue to analyze. And I, I guess the analyzing takes place during this next step of the implementation plan, or perhaps it's different. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, I'll allow Gary to jump in after I give my best shot, which is, yes, the implementation phase does conduct that analysis. However, again, there's multiple components, as you saw that one slide that had lots of lines and rows, that there's multiple steps to the implementation phase. I, I'm hearing clear feedback from the council today that the primary interest is not in becoming a large, you know, purchaser of wholesale electric energy. And so what we'll do as a first step is that we're, we'll, we'll do some analysis in consultation with Baker Tilly and staff about our ability to create a more narrow implementation process that would have a more narrow analysis function that, you know, isn't trying to answer everything around this, because I think that, that changes the time and the cost and the scope. But if we can create an implementation phase that, you know, has that additional analysis, but it's more focused and targeted to this piece that we're talking about, I'll confirm that with council before we move forward.
I appreciate that. And it, you know, I understand that, to me, it's the long-term goal. Maybe you start out and you have to wholesale-retail for a while. But long-term, our real goal is to be the energy provider, in my mind.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ware.
Thank you, Mayor. Feel like I've been here before. And last time, we were here because we thought we could make some money, and that never did turn out. And so it kind of just disappeared for a while, which was peacefully. But could we look on, on page five? Because page five, if I'm reading this right, tells a pretty good story. Because the coastal areas seem to be using this. The non-coastal areas are not.
That is correct. Of who's, who has an implemented operating CCA, that, that's the green, those green highlighted areas, those that are considering or in that implementation plan is the yellow. And then...
But the vast majority is already got something in place.
That's correct.
If it's on this side of the mountains. On this side of the mountains, we're, we're stuck. We don't really have anything. So that, that tells me maybe we're 10 years, 5 years behind where we need to do before we start popping out experts to start monitoring or do whatever they need to do. I think staff probably has some time that's going to have to be invested in this, because I don't want to spend a lot of money just poking around, seeing what, what it is and where it falls. I'd like to get to a point where we have a good idea of where it's at and where our, where our price is at and, and what will actually happen, then just start out with throwing 250,000 or however much money that, that we're, that we end up spending. It, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Okay, that's fine. That, that reaction is fine. I absolutely understand that reaction. Because it, it just, I mean, I mean, what are we doing? We're talking about local, you know, the Bakersfield city. I, I personally don't want canopy solar paneling the skyline of Bakersfield. We could have more generation, I'm sure of that. But let's, let's talk about pros and cons. Local control. Do we really have local control? I mean, do we really have local control?
Well, one of the responsibilities, if a CCA is established, is for this council to set rates. So that, that's, that's a lot of control, in, in my mind. And to, to cast the, the vision of what, what is the emphasis of the CCA, as Councilmember Smith said, it could be focused on power generation, you know, that, that could be the emphasis. Or it could be, you know, looking for the lowest price to offer to residents so that there's more than a 5% savings, maybe there's a greater savings. So if that's the, if that's the vision of the council, for us to look down each of those paths during this process. And I, I was just going to add to Christian's comment of, there's lots of off-ramps that we could take if, if, as we go down this road of deeper investigation, we could always pull back and, and say, "We want to take an off-ramp at this point because this investigation has led us to this conclusion." And we can come back to the council a number of different times, so.
But those points, those off-points, I mean, they cost money. Absolutely cost money. I, I don't believe that we, as a city, are ready to spend money like that. I think we have a lot of exploring to do, and I think we're just not ready for it. But when we are, we should be ready to mobilize pretty quickly if we've really done our homework.
If I may, Councilmember, I think if I could summarize a key point that you shared is that there's the ability for staff to do, you know, some of this analysis and research independent of spending contract dollars to go and get that research done. And so again, I, I would offer that, you know, in coming months, what we will do is, what we can do, I would offer up, is for staff to, again, assess what are some next steps that could, could be done, analysis in-house? What are, what are options for doing analysis with some contract support, but in a narrowed scope? And then come back to council and share what that dollar amount is, what we can do in-house, what we would, you know, what would the cost be if we did another step outside? And that speaks to your point of, you know, saving some of those dollars, doing some of that homework first to staff. And I think part of that process could be identifying what, what would be a potential next step in cost, but first to our homework in-house.
I appreciate that. And if you could have a goal that at least partial, even partial, of a non, a non-waterfront, if the, if we could at least show a partial entry into solar, like the outlet, like the, the boundary, the ocean. I mean, we need to have something that says, "Okay, we think we're ready to move out into this area." Because we're going to have to know how to do that. And I think we need to get ourselves prepared to the point where we can start small and see how we can do shading the eastern part of, of, of California. Does that make any sense?
It is. I think the, the comparison to coastal, to Central Valley is understood. There's a distinct comparison there. I think also, what does, what does solar generation, solar canopies look like in the Central Valley by comparison? As well as I, I heard as well, that, you know, we will want to be thoughtful about where we would do a lot of this generation. You're not going to necessarily have these solar fields next to, you know, certain other uses. But we should be thoughtful about where solar would go. And I agree, but part of our approach is, we do think we can start smaller and grow. One of the challenges, though, is until you at least have the formation, you can't even start small. But we, we will put some more details to what a phased small start can look like, as well as a narrower scope in, you know, what an implementation plan could look like.
And maybe we could get a new report in maybe 90 days or something like that, just to see the progress.
I would say roughly 90 days, yes, plus or minus.
I'm not setting that as a date, but, you know, in four, four months or something, we could get that. And then maybe be able to actually make some intelligent decisions about where do we go next? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ware. Councilmember Freeman?
Well, I'd like to wrap this up, so I would like to make a motion to direct staff to continue exploring the CCA, the ADC, per the comments of both Councilman Smith and Councilman Ware. Thank you.
And now, Councilmember Gonzalez, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make a few comments before we get to the question, if I can, Councilmember Freeman. To quote a former Secretary of Defense, "There are known knowns, there are known unknowns, and there are unknown unknowns." And I feel like we don't know quite enough with this particular matter. So I, I certainly support the recommendation that we continue to explore, because there is, there could potentially be an opportunity, we just don't know of it. I think in the motion, I would, would ask that we really get clear on what our goal is as a council and as a city as we proceed forward. We've, we've talked about local control. I really think that, listening to my colleagues and from my own perspective, the real priority here is how we can reduce the cost of utility. And, and we need to have a clear-eyed strategy, a plan, to, to, to do that, either through a CCA or not. And that's my second referral, in that we look at other ways that we can reach the goals that we are seeking, and to reduce utility costs. I appreciate Councilmember Smith and what his, what he's trying to accomplish. And I think we all should be thinking creatively, ways in which we can reduce utility costs for our constituents in particular, given the reality that costs continue to escalate and it's very expensive, and especially as we see hotter and hotter summers. But there might be other alternatives for us to get to that same goal. And I, I don't want us to singularly lock ourselves into this CCA model. Perhaps there are other options up there. So my third request is that we take Councilmember, or, excuse me, Mr. Turnip Seeds' recommendation, and we bring in local experts like Mr. Frederick, so that we can hear from them as well, and understand their perspective, and, and help invite them to think with us on different questions as it relates to solar, for example. I mean, we, we have an issue that's well-understood by lots of folks in the profession related to the duck curve. And how do you, how do you address that challenge when, you know, there's an excess supply of energy and the demand is low? And, and vice versa, you know, in, in the evening times. And so we ought to, I, I want us to continue to look at all of these options on the table, and sort of broaden our thinking a little bit more, so that we can ultimately get to that goal of cost savings. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Before we vote, I want to, I'm going to withdraw my other questions I was going to ask, but I do want to understand the motion in entirety before we vote, because there's been a lot going on up here.
Okay. So, Councilmember Smith made a motion, Councilmember Freeman made a motion. Why don't you go ahead and explain the motion that we would be voting on since it's the second?
Is this the first?
No. Councilmember Smith made the first motion.
I don't know. He was giving directives to staff, not motions.
Councilmember Smith had made one.
There's only one motion.
Mayor, I can...
No. Councilmember Smith had made a motion, then Councilmember Freeman had made a motion.
Okay, then clarify. What was Councilman Smith's motion?
Councilmember Smith wanted to dwell a little bit more on the issue that he thinks is, is before the council. I believe, Councilmember Freeman, that you addressed Councilmember Smith's motion in your motion.
Yes.
And his motion, Councilmember Gray, is that it's a... your motion and his motion, Councilmember Gray, is that it's a motion by Freeman to continue this particular item to explore the comments of both Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Ware.
Doing that through, spending money with, or are we doing that through our own staff?
No, I believe the city manager made it pretty clear that our own staff was doing it and was going to bring back a more direct approach.
Okay, that's what was confusing me. Thank you.
Okay. So now with no other requests to speak, we're going to vote on Councilmember Freeman's motion. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And now next item, please.
Close session, item 4A, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, City Manager.
And we are adjourned to close session.
Adjourned to close session, sorry.
Adjourned to close session, we're for you.
I'd rather try and accomplish something greater than fail than try to accomplish nothing and finally succeed. I'll stay here all night until winter has. I'd rather try and accomplish something greater than fail than try to accomplish nothing and finally succeed. I'll stay here all night until winter has. I'd rather try and accomplish something greater than fail than try to accomplish nothing and finally succeed. I'll stay here all night until winter has. And finally succeed.
Thank you all for your patience. We're just waiting for a couple of people. Reconvening the 3:30 City Council meeting, Madam City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, there was only one item on closed session this evening, item 4A, and there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, the 3:30 meeting stands adjourned at 5:24. And we will be ready to start the next one.
Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of August 14, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you, and welcome to all of you. Tonight, we have the pleasure of having Reverend Mercedes Tudy Hamilton, who's the pastor of Kane Memorial AME Church. She will offer the invocation, and then that will be followed by our City Hall fellow, who just completed her program in the Police Department, Rosia Guzman Vargas. She is a graduate of CSUB in Criminal Justice, and she plans to obtain her Master's in Counseling and serve the underrepresented population. So would you at this time please stand? And Reverend? Go ahead and lower the mic, please.
Okay. Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we humbly come into your presence tonight, thanking you for granting us life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. We ask your forgiveness of our sins that we have committed against you and against others. Please bless the proceedings of this meeting, which is about to take place on behalf of the City of Bakersfield. Please bless Mayor Go, all council members, city officials, staff members, their families, all first responders, and the citizens of Bakersfield, who will come before this council with presentations and petitions. May all weighty matters be deliberated in a just and a righteous way for the common good of humanity. We thank you, Lord, for your protection, hearing, and answering of this prayer that is offered in your massless and sovereign name. Amen.
Amen. Rosio?
Salute pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and mercy.
Thank you. May be seated Pastor. Thank you, Rosio. Thank you, and all the best in your studies ahead. Pastor, thank you. Welcome. I know you're relatively new to the pulpit locally here, and so thank you very much. We appreciate it. If you need to leave at this time for other things, that would be fine, too. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Presentations, item 4A, proclamation to Priscilla Russell and Gigi the Warrior, declaring Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Bakersfield during September 2024.
Colleagues, childhood cancer is the number-one leading cause of death by disease in children in the United States. Each year, more than 14,000 children between the ages of birth and age 19 are diagnosed with cancer. And every three minutes, a family hears the devastating words, "Their child has been diagnosed with cancer." So I read this following proclamation tonight. Whereas cancer knows no boundaries afflicting all ethnic and socioeconomic groups, and whereas increased awareness and research will help educate the public on early diagnosis and provide readily accessible clinical care to patients in need; and whereas dedicated health professionals, agencies, and organizations have made their mission to help children with cancer and provide educational, emotional, and financial support to their families; and whereas children deserve the chance to dream big, discover new interests, and live to their absolute potential while fighting the disease. Now therefore, I, Karen Go, Mayor of the City of Bakersfield, do hereby proclaim September 20, 2024, sorry, as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in our city, and urge all residents to join our city in reaffirming our commitment to fighting childhood cancer. It's my honor to be able to present this to warriors that we have here, Gigi, who's president of Gigi the Warrior, and to Priscilla Russell on behalf of the Bakersfield Childhood Cancer Community. Thank you so much, and if you would just address us, who wants to go? Mom's gonna go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Go, and council members, for allowing us to speak once again. My name is Claudia Guerrero, and I was given the title of cancer mom in 2019, when my daughter Gigi was diagnosed with acute lymphoblastic leukemia. Well, Gigi is now cancer-free, and she is a founder of Gigi the Warrior, a nonprofit organization which helps local children affected by childhood cancer. As a cancer mom, I rise today and support families and children everywhere who have been affected by childhood cancer. September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. As I know the meaning behind this month, I also realize that childhood cancer and all cancers have an impact in our city. According to the American Childhood Cancer Organization, more than 15,000 children under 21 are diagnosed with cancer every year. I know too well the heartbreak that any family must endure and the pain caused by childhood cancer. Here locally, Gigi and I have volunteered and supported numerous initiatives to fight so that all children can have a chance of survival. We come before you to ask that all September, the Bakersfield City will go gold for these children that are fighting, the survivors, and those gone too soon. Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to say thank you to Claudia and thank you, Gigi. It's one thing to experience such an obstacle in life. It's another thing to use that challenge and use that experience to really help shape the future for many other people and help improve the lives of others. And so, thank you so much for all the leadership that you're providing in our community and all the wonderful things you're doing for children in Kern County.
Madam Clerk?
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it on the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received nine speaker cards regarding items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first three public speakers are Kenny Harmer, Pete Leveroy, and Gail Malouf.
Mr. Harmon, would you please come forward? And just for all of you, if you can just adjust the microphone to your height, that would be very helpful. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Kenny Harmer. I'm a resident of Bakersfield Country Club. What we're here for tonight is about a zoning issue and a property near where all of us live. And I've got a little story that reminds me of something that happened that happened to us, we believe. I'm in college, the University of Wyoming, and I'm taking an exam. And this kid gets up, and as he's putting his test results in the pile, the instructor goes, "The professor, sir, you can give that to me. You were cheating. I saw you cheating, and you're not going to pass this course." And the kid goes, "Do you know who I am?" And the professor goes, "I don't care who you are. I don't care. You cheated. You're not going to pass." He goes, "Do you know who I am?" And the kid takes his, and the professor didn't know him. He takes his card, his test, shoves it in the middle of the pile, throws it up, and walks out. He got away with it, and that's exactly what happened to us. We met at Bakersfield Country Club on this one issue here, and then all of a sudden, they'll explain what happened to you better, but the piece of property got shoved in with a bunch of other properties, and we had 150 people at Bakersfield Country Club who were opposed to this, and it got shut down for a while, and now it's been passed after being shoved into a bunch of other properties. That's all I have to say on it. Was it fair, just like the kid who cheated on the test? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Pete Leveroni, followed by Gail Malouf, followed by Valencia Chambers.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council people. Thank you for your service to our community. We're here tonight to talk about a 12-acre lot, piece of property on the northwest corner of Fairfax and College Avenue. Three years ago, the, and the property is zone R1. Three years ago, the owner of the property requested to have the zoning changed and to put a mixed-use facility in there. There was a meeting at Bakersfield Country Club. 150 people showed up, and the project went down in flames. And we thought that was the end of it. We just, in the last few days, found out that this zoning issue, this piece of property, was bundled with a bunch of other properties for the mixed, for the housing element, which I understand and support. But, you know, the notice that was sent out, actually that wasn't sent, it was just put in the paper, was not clear. Nobody really understood it. And subsequently, the only, the way we found out about it, and Gail's gonna talk about this next, is that there was a for-sale sign put up because the owner of that property now is trying to sell it for a million and a half bucks. So we feel as though the notice was improper, inappropriate, and not fair. We ask that this... We ask that this property be rezoned, go back to R1 zoning, or at the very least, referred back to staff to look for another way to, you know, make this what I call a win-win situation for both the residents and the owner of the property. But, you know, we just feel we didn't have our voice heard, and we had two days to gather a group here. If we had the appropriate amount of time, we'd be down here at force and, you know, express our feelings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for the record, would you just say your name, please?
I'm sorry, say?
For the record, would you say your name, please?
Oh, Pete Leveroni.
Thank you, Mr. Leveroni. Next speaker, please.
Gail Malouf, followed by Valencia Chambers, followed by Anna B.
If you have anything, you can just leave it there, and the clerk will get it. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
I've got some information for... to give to each of you, if you could, please. My name is Gail Malouf. I'm residing... have resided in Bakersfield all my life. I have been a local real estate broker within Bakersfield for 47 years, and I'm a past president of the Bakersfield Association of Realtors. So I'm very well aware of property rights and zoning. I'm here tonight to present my concerns on the recent passing of the state-mandated zone changes that were presented in a bundle. The bundle included 433 acres throughout the city of Bakersfield in all wards except six. Although I cannot speak to all the properties in the bundle, I'm specifically addressing the 12.7 acres on the northwest corner of College and Fairfax. This property was Zoned R1 for single-family homes. Three years ago, the owner of the property had asked for a zone change. There was a sign put on the property noting the residence of a meeting with a planning commission, and letters were sent to those residing within 300 feet of the property. After the first planning commission meeting and hearing, many spoke in opposition to the zone change and plan. The planning commission asked the owner to meet with the neighbors and work on a revised plan. There were 150 residents at the meeting with the owner. Commissioner Cassie Biddle, Councilman Ken Weir, and Paul Johnson, Director of Planning, were in attendance at the meeting just to observe. All 158 residents opposed the plan and zone change. They came from south of College, two subdivisions north of the subject parcel, the Summit and East Ridge, and the Bakersfield Country Club. The owner pulled his application before the next meeting. We were told there would be a sign and letter sent if anything should arise on the property in the future. We hadn't seen or heard anything in regards to this property until a few weeks ago, when a "for sale" sign was put on the property. At that point, it was when we became aware of the zone change to MX1.
Ms. Malouf, your time is up. Can you just wrap up your comments? We thank you for providing them in writing. Go ahead and a couple more sentences.
Okay. We feel that we were mishandled. We feel that we were not appropriately notified. You have a copy of the notification that's in the paper. There was no address, nothing in there to make us be aware that this property was even there. There was no sign on the property. There were no letters sent out, and we feel blindsided. And we would like to have... we're asking you and requesting the city to look at this, pull... put it back into R1 zoning. And if somebody wants to change it, give us an opportunity in order to speak our word. We are citizens, taxpayers, and we feel that we should have had a notification and be able to respond, especially since the exact same zoning from three years ago.
Thank you, Ms. Malouf. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Valencia Chambers, followed by Anna B., followed by Jessica McConnell.
Good evening. My name is Valencia Chambers, V-A-L-E-N-C-I-A, C-H-A-M-B-E-R-S. I have a couple of things to ask about. Okay, right now, what happened with me is I'm a co... I don't know what I am now, though, but I was a co-owner with my sister on a house. And my older sister, when my sister passed away, and so my sister Olivia and I went and had the house put in our name jointly. Somehow, she went and got my name taken off. I don't know how this happened. Maybe you can help me to figure this out. She's got... she went and filed a deed with her name on it. She called the police on me, had me arrested for burglary. I was arrested, spent over 30 days in jail because I wouldn't plead guilty to burglary. I didn't commit burglary. I entered the house with my keys, co-owner of this house. In the meantime, I don't have a house. I don't have a place to stay. I'm in a shelter. At this point, I want to know, do you have some kind of influence that we could maybe have a cold water fountain placed in this shelter? I mean, we have water, but it's room temperature. I don't know if you have any influence on this. Could you please check into that and see if we can get some cold water fountain? I mean, staff have cold water fountains, but we don't. And when it's really 100 and something temperature, cold water makes a real big difference, believe it or not. One more thing I wanted to say. Open house shelter, I'm being... I feel like I'm being discriminated against. I've been experiencing a really, really lot of ugly things here. Basically, people coming to my bedside, touching me inappropriately, just things like that. And when I report it, and I report it to the police department and everything else, and that's another thing. Eternal affairs, I don't have no problem with them getting back to me on any of the issues. Maybe you could check into that for them. Eternal affairs never gets back to me. That's been since January.
Ms. Chambers, thank you for sharing. Your time is up. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor.
But are you able to get... look into that?
Councilmember Gonzalez is going to speak right now.
Ms. Chambers, thank you so much for coming to council today and visiting with us and sharing your concerns. I'm going to ask Mr. Valdez if he can meet you in the back of the chambers.
Mr. Valdez.
So that we can get a better sense of what?
Just to wrap it up?
Ms. Chambers, let Councilmember Gonzalez finish, and then we're going to get you some help.
Mr. Valdez will be able to take your concerns, and we can work towards...
What's his name, Valdez?
He's right in the back. Mr. Valdez, will you just raise your hand? Ms. Chambers, he's right there.
Oh, he can help me?
Yeah. And so, he'll have a conversation. He's our assistant to the city manager. And what I'd like us to do is see about the concerns, those are very serious concerns, and see exactly what facility we're talking about. And then also, let's work on those cold water drinking fountains if we can, put it on our deferred maintenance list. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chambers. If you just go back there and meet Mr. Valdez, he'll talk to you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Anna B., followed by Jessica McConnell, followed by Cecilia.
Welcome.
Councilmembers, thank you for your service. I work for the Bakersfield Police Department. My name is Anna Byrd, BYD, so I'm very involved in community issues. I am a resident of the Bakersfield Country Club, the lower division. My concern is the rezoning of the 12.7 acres on Fairfax and College that is going from residential to commercial. This is three blocks from my house, and this property sits next to three water towers that hold anywhere from 70 to 500,000 gallons of water. And the California Department of Industrial Relations states that nothing can be built 1,000 feet from those water towers. So the fact that it's going to be going from residential to commercial is concerning because we already have two malls just north and south of this property, which is kind of like the pink elephant in the neighborhood because it's next to the water towers. It's in a very small intersection. There's two residential homes directly opposite the proposed commercial property, which would, in my opinion, working for BPD, would create neighborhood blight. The area is an upscale country club area, and I am worried about preserving the sanctity and sanctuary of my home. When I moved in this neighborhood, I did not move there because I wanted to live next to a mini mall, as you can understand. So, I am requesting that this... you know, the other 400 and so acres, great. Another concern is the Niles Corridor from Fairfax to Beale needs to be redeveloped more than putting a mini mall up on this 12-acre spot. A park would be really nice there, some green space. And I think the reason the property owner is selling it is because, for so cheap, $1 million for 12 acres, is... oops, sorry. Is because he can't develop it the way it should be because it was opposed. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byrd. Next speaker, please.
Jessica McConnell, followed by Cecilia, followed by...
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the people from the Bakersfield Country Club area coming up and making us aware of this. Have any of you spoken to Mr. Burns or gone to Development Services and talked about the zoning and the lack of notice? I'm just... this is sort of a really odd situation. I think it's part of this blanket.
I think, Mr. Clegg, would you like to address this?
Councilmember Freeman, just in the spirit of trying to, you know, honor the council rules on the sort of the back and forth, I can answer your question. The community members have reached out to staff, and again, I think, have raised some good considerations, and we understand, I think, the concerns, both with the potential project and process. But again, don't begrudge the members of the community also coming and making sure their voice is heard here at council meeting, but they have talked with staff, yes.
My just concern was there was sort of a blanket rezoning, as I remember, a package of a lot of properties, but that I didn't realize... you know, normally, you rezon a property, there's signs on the property, letters go out to people. I mean, that's what the community understands the law is and what they should expect. And I don't know why that process was... must have been skipped. But I just wonder, is... did we do this right? Are we exempted, for some reason, from making notice so the neighbors knew what was going on? And if not, is there any way to review that decision? I mean, I don't know. I know it's sort of a mess because it's passed, but still, if we did something wrong, is there any way to remedy it?
So, Councilmember Freeman, what we did in this process... now, you're correct. This was part of one of two actions that included multiple properties. There were two recent actions that had many properties listed. For this particular property, we did follow our typical process, which is we published in the newspaper also property owners that are within a 300-foot radius. Oh, excuse me. Thank you. We just used the newspaper process this time, but we did not provide the 300-foot letter radius through this process. We only did the newspaper process this time around.
For those of you in the audience, I know you're very passionate about this. Right now, we are addressing the council members speaking, and we have other requests for the council members to speak. So, let's make sure that that follows through. Ms. McConnell, I know that Councilmember Weir would like to speak, so if you would just sit down for a minute, I'll call on you again. Councilmember Freeman, do you have anything further?
Is this currently zoned mixed-use, so it could be developed either as a residential property or a commercial?
It is MX1 mixed-use, yes.
So it could be developed as a residential property?
Correct.
It could be developed as single-family lots?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. A little further down the agenda today, I will making... will be making comments on this, and hopefully, we can get people back together and have a reconciliation.
Thank you, Councilmember Weir. Mr. Clegg?
Actually, I thank you for the opportunity, Mayor, and Mayor and council. Councilmember Weir, we're prepared to receive your questions and directions at a later time, but it is also appropriate now, if you'd like to provide that direction at this time.
Okay. Since that is available to me, I want to make a motion directed to staff to reach out to the community representatives to see if there is a path forward or a compromise that can be reached, and for the city attorney to give the community representative the name of the attorney suing the city on the similar zone change. So... so could you... could somebody explain that to the audience now, please?
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Weir, again, I think the city manager can talk to the community representatives either today or at a later time in terms of some plan or options moving forward. But I have no problem in letting the community, as well as the public speakers tonight, to let you know that the city is also being sued on the prior zone change for the 900 acres. And we are likely to expect another lawsuit on the 453 acres in which your thought is on the particular 12 acres. And so, my thought would be that if you can't find a way forward, working with the city manager and his staff, that you reach out to me, and I'm going to give you the name of the attorney that's suing us on the 900, because we are, again, it's probable that she's going to sue us on the 453, and you could tag along with that. So we've given you a couple of options to move forward.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Anything else, Councilmember Weir?
No. I think that resolves it for tonight.
Thank you. Now, Ms. McConnell, and thank you again for coming out. Ms. McConnell.
Good evening. I'm Jessica McConnell. I work for a couple animal rescues within the community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about an issue that affects not only just the animals in our community, but the well-being and the safety of our neighborhood.
Ms. McConnell, can you raise the mic and speak a little louder, please?
I'm here to address two critical concerns, the need for stronger consequences for those who commit acts of animal abuse and animal dumping, as well as the growing feral cat issue in our community. First, the matter of animal abuse. It is not just a crime against innocent creatures. It's a symptom of a deeper issue within our society. Research has shown that strong correlation between cruelty of animals and also leads to cruelty against humans. We allow animal abusers to go unpunished. We are sending a message that such behavior is tolerable. I urge council members to implement stronger consequences for those found guilty of animal abuse, animal dumping, and maybe even a spay-and-neuter program for other animals. In regards to the feral cat issue, our city has seen a significant increase in the number of feral cats, which poses a unique challenge. These animals, while often the result of human neglect, can lead to public health concerns, damage to local wildlife, and decline in the quality of life in our affected neighborhoods. To tackle this problem, I propose a two-pronged approach, collaboration with local animal shelters. We need... animal shelters will not take any feral cats. They are not doing any trapping, any releasing. You see dead animals on the road in communities every day. I was just at a house that actually was abandoned, and 60 cats were left in there, as well as dogs. Called animal control right away. They weren't able to come out and do anything other than post a sign on the door. We were able to remove 36 of these animals and get them help and safety. The landlord apparently showed up and released them out onto the street, which we then found them dead all over the community. And I know there's a lot of us who are actually out there trapping and releasing and neutering, but it's a lot of work, and we need more programs and help.
Thank you, Ms. McConnell, and thank you for your efforts on behalf of our animals and to all in our animal community who are doing so much for this huge challenge that we face as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Ms. McConnell, for bringing these issues to our attention. Animal abuse is a very serious issue, and I'm thankful that you raised some light on it. And I agree, we do need tougher penalties, and we need to respond in a clearer way, sending a message to those who are abusers. You know, it's interesting that you bring this up today. I was just at the animal care facility for a meeting this afternoon. There are a number of issues facing our animal care facility, but also our response to a number of the issues related to our pet population in Bakersfield. And so, what I'd like us to do, Mr. Clegg, is have a workshop at a future council meeting so we can address some of these issues. In particular, Ms. McConnell referenced the growing feral cat population. I know we have a TNR program in place. I think that we ought... it's timely that we look at the results and see where we can invest some dollars to improve that program or increase the capacity of that program. We also have a mandatory spay-and-neuter ordinance on the books today, but we need to do the second half of that and take a look at both the enforcement end and also the education into the community. And I think that's a really important conversation for the full council to have. As I mentioned, there are a number of issues also at the animal care facility, including a number of just... a number of just different maintenance issues related to the capacity of the facility, some, you know, beautification projects they like to see, but also just our ability to work in closer coordination with lots of other providers, including animal control and our homeless service providers, so that we can help reduce the number of pets who are put into, the number of dogs who are put into the shelter and who don't make it out. I want to leave this comment, though, on a good note. Since some of our efforts over the last year and a half, I learned that we're on track to have 1,000 fewer dogs enter our animal care facility this year. We also will see a reduction of around 550 to 600 animals who are put to sleep, fewer animals put to sleep this year as a result of some of our work. So, we are making progress. The problem is, this issue is pervasive and it continues to envelop lots of areas of our community. And I think we need to, I know there's a lot of other pressing issues in the city, but we ought to spend some time on this one. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Cecilia, followed by Ernie Lopez, followed by Wendell Wesley, Jr.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Cecilia Marcial, and I'm a prenatal nurse in the city of Bakersfield. I am here to stand in solidarity with the people of Palestine. I am here because nothing can justify genocide and nothing can justify your silence. Purchase with blood money. I am here for the record of history so that everyone knows, we were not silent in U.S.-funded genocide. Your constituents do not support you. We adamantly denounce the killing of children and civilians. The IDF continues to target healthcare workers. 20 of 36 hospitals are out of service. 16 of 36 are only partially functional. The systematic dismantling of healthcare must end. I stand as a healthcare worker for Palestine with more than 3,000 other healthcare workers who understand that it is our professional obligation to do whatever we can to end this genocide. As Dr. Kadir said, we understand that liberation and the political self-determination are cornerstones of health. Do you believe your support of an apartheid state equivalent to Nazi Germany contributes to the common good of humanity? That is all.
Thank you. And the next speaker, please.
Ernie Lopez, followed by Wendell Wesley, Jr.
My name's Ernie Lopez, I was watching a property at 1129 A Street for a landlord named Cedro. The gentleman is not doing a good job as being a, he hired me to watch the property and then guns were aimed and I could have been shot at that property. I believe that it's a nuisance and it's dangerous for him to be in the real estate business buying estates in Bakersfield, California. The police report made, the gentleman who aimed the gun didn't have a license for the weapons. They were drunk and the only thing that was wrong with the situation is something could have happened to me that night. So, I was just bringing it up to the council that this gentleman needs more discipline, he needs to be removed from real estate buying homes here in Bakersfield.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
All right.
Do you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Mr. Burns, if we can have someone from code enforcement reach out to Mr. Lopez regarding this property. I'm not sure of all the issues related, but I think one of the issues I heard had something to do with code enforcement. And so, if we can have a code enforcement officer reach out, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thanks, sir.
Thank you for speaking. Next speaker, please.
Wendell Wesley, Jr.
Hi, my name is Wendell Wesley, Jr., and I'm calling about the California Avenue Senior Housing. There are three buildings, two to the west side of N Street and one to the east side of N Street. And there is no crosswalk that connects the west to the east and because of that, we have residents in chairs and scooters that leave from the driveway at Catty Corner across the street, which is extremely unsafe, being that right there at 11th and N, there is a street that deadends right into N Street. So, we are requesting that the wheelchair accessible ramps get done going directly across with speed bumps on both, going both directions of the street, north and south. We want to thank the city for repaving and putting that there's a schooling there and so thank you for that. We think that, being that that's a grid location going from, in a lot of those areas, that maybe some roundabouts would be very helpful and in some cases, definitely some four-way stops and better lighting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Mr. Meyer, if we can look at the traffic calming strategies for that particular area, I will say the Streets Division is doing an excellent job with repaving many of our neighborhood streets and certainly that area was long overdue and really excited to see all of the improvements in that particular area of central Bakersfield. But given the number of seniors in that neighborhood and the number of pedestrians, people who are just walking around and in chairs, I think it does make a lot of sense for us to have some raised crosswalks, maybe some speed humps, but I'd like to make a referral tonight that we look into that particular area. Thanks for bringing it up, Mr. Wesley. Appreciate it.
Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers in this category?
Mayor, go. We have not received any additional speaker cards for non-agenda items, nor have we received speaker cards for items on the agenda tonight.
Right, thank you. And so now, next item.
Appointments Item 6A, one appointment to the Miscellaneous Civil Service Board, an at-large appointment to a term to expire December 31, 2026, due to the term expiration of Kevin Oliver. One application for appointment has been received from Mariana Jimenez.
Thank you. I'd like to clarify the voting process. The council will vote electronically and then the city clerk will display and announce the results. Based on these results, the council will then make the appropriate motion regarding There's only one, so that is not necessary. So, you're still going to have to make the motion, unless somebody wanted to.
Thank you. Motion to appoint Mariana Jimenez to the Miscellaneous Civil Service Board.
Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Freeman.
The reason I made a request to speak is that this is a fairly important position and I was disappointed that we didn't get a number of applicants. And I have nothing against the ladies who applied, but for something like this, I really think we need a bigger applicant pool. I don't know if it's because of the heat, summer vacations, what caused this to only get one person interested, but this deals with the personnel issues throughout our city of 3,000 employees. It's an important position. So, I would personally like to see us go out, maybe for another month, and seek, see if we can find some more applicants. And if we don't, well, then we only have one person, but that'd be, before I make a motion, I see Mr. Clegg would like to say something, so.
Mr. Clegg.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Freeman, Mayor and council. I'm open to the feedback. I agree with you, this is a really important appointment. Unfortunately, we've been recruiting for this appointment now for, city clerk, four months?
The initial press release went out in February.
For longer than four months. So, we've done some targeted efforts as well, just for the benefit of the council. We have, and I'll admit somewhat selfishly, we want to make sure we have good folks on this panel, so we've reached out to human resources professionals, former, you know, public servants, community leaders to, you know, encourage that we've, folks getting the word out to potential candidates. So, we have been recruiting for some time on this and this is now the first, you know, time that we've had an applicant, but to your point, it is a limited pool. It has caused us some challenges in actually having quorum for the civil service and we've actually had to cancel some meetings and delayed some of our city business. But again, still, even with some of those factors, still open to, you know, council motion on this topic, but we have been recruiting for some time.
Well, thank you and I appreciate the efforts you have made. I still feel we would be better off if we had a number of applicants and so I would like to make a motion that we put this back out for applications for two more council meetings, bring it back in approximately a month or two council meetings to vote on this, so that's my motion.
You have a motion? I don't, Madam Clerk, I'm having a hard time with the request to speak. Can you clear who's gone previously? So, is Council, Vice Mayor, is that you? Nope. I see Ken Weir and Bruce Freeman still up and no one else.
Mayor, go. There may be a technical issue.
Okay, let's just pause for a minute and clear and then we'll.
I think, Mayor, it's on your display. I show two requests to speak, one from Patty Gray and one from Bob Smith.
Go ahead and press your button. I have nobody on mine right now.
Okay. I just want to say, I totally agree with Councilmember Freeman. I think we need to have a larger pool, so I would be in favor of pushing this off. Thank you.
Anyone else? Right now, I have no one on my request to speak list. You want, oh. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. Are there other openings or is this the last one to fill?
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember, this is the final opening to be filled.
Okay, thank you.
Right now, they're working on the technical part. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment before we take a vote? You have a motion? Please cast your votes. The motion is to.
To delay.
Is it working?
It is working, just not request to speak.
Motion is approved with Vice Mayor Gonzalez and Councilmember Cor voting no and Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 7A through 7I for approval. A staff memorandum was provided regarding Item 7A1, transmitting the minutes which were inadvertently left out of the original agenda packet. And another staff memorandum was provided regarding Item 7D9, removing the item from the agenda.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, no member of the council has requested to remove an item and no one has the conflict, and so I will move the consent calendar approval.
You have a motion?
Motion is approved with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Calendar Public Hearings Item 8A and 8B for approval.
Thank you. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under Consent Calendar Hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it will be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. So, at this time, I will open Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items 8A through B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? So, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony, only to remove the item from the consent calendar Seeing none, does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearings?
Mayor, I'd like to request that we remove Item 8A for separate consideration.
Okay.
I'd like to move 8B.
8B, all right. So, both of them are being moved for separate consideration. So, at this time, our next item will be going on to public hearings and each side will be allowed 15 minutes, 15 minutes for all speakers per side. So, it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those first opposed to the staff's recommendation and then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's the clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 15 minutes, 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to all who wish to speak. So, now, Madam Clerk, we will have Item 8A with Councilmember Weir. Oh, I'm so sorry, I got them mixed up. All right, Councilmember Gonzalez. Vice Mayor, and now, staff, would you like to offer some comments? Mr. Clegg and then Ms. Byers?
I will turn it over to Ms. Byers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg, counsel. On May 11, 2023, the city council approved Agreement Number 2023-111 with James Narducci for Amistoy Hotel. It's located at 622 East 21st Street, within the Old Town Kern EOA, for an amount not to exceed $106,000 for lead abatement, upgrading windows, upgrading downspouts, and canvas awning installation. And so, what you're seeing here is the existing building and then what is proposed. It includes the awnings, there's some facade improvements to the wall, the downspout, can you go to the next one for me, please? You can see there where the windows are aging, the downspout, it's leaking and so it's really tarnished a lot of that facade. So, with that, he proceeded to move forward with some of these improvements that have been identified. We did receive a request for an additional funding in the amount of $63,843 for exterior painting, interior tile flooring upgrades, and increased costs to the exterior brick facade improvements. The EOA program was created to encourage the redevelopment of vacant property or building improvements, and so with that, staff does recommend that council approve the amendment for an amount not to exceed a total of $170,160,57. The owner, Mr. James Narducci, is here tonight and can also comment on the project.
Thank you, Ms. Byers. Mr. Clegg, any comments before we go, before I open? Thank you.
No, thank you.
So, at this time, 8A is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Please come forward to the mic, identify yourself and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please step to the microphone and proceed. Welcome, please identify yourself and.
My name's James Narducci, Jimmy, and I think this is a great project and I really want to see this happen. This building has been my whole life here in town and I want this really badly. That's all I can say. I spoke with Andre earlier about it, so I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Well, no.
Vice Mayor, I'm suggesting that I think I know where you may be going, and so I suggested to the mayor that perhaps leaving the hearing open while you may be of some benefit.
Great.
We just need to remember to close it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Narducci, for clarifying. Let me start by saying what a special place Narducci's Cafe really is to Bakersfield. It is a historic building. I've had many fond memories personally in Narducci's Cafe. Actually, just a few days after my dad died, Councilmember Smith and his sons took me to lunch right there at Narducci's, and I'll never forget that moment, it being in the back room, and the windows, and just, there's nothing like it. There's nothing like that building, and it's an important, iconic place. And there are many important, iconic places in Old Town Kern, and it really is the place that really builds our community, helps us come together. And so it is important for us to continue to help revitalize some of these areas. In fact, tonight, on item 7I2, we approved an agreement to work on an Old Town Kern Vision Plan. And this is a step that is absolutely necessary in order for us to save Old Town Kern, and save all of these important historical buildings, and also help revitalize the area around a disadvantaged neighborhood. So I'm eager to proceed with this, but I do have some questions. And, Mr. Narducci, the building looks beautiful as it's rendered. I wonder if you could just answer a few questions for me? I'd appreciate it. Number one is, as we look towards the future, can you describe for the council what the plan is to operate the restaurant and cafe for the community?
Mr. Narducci, go ahead.
I want to operate it just like Woolgrowers, Pyrenees, Luigi's.
Okay. And do you have a lease agreement with an operator for the restaurant?
I do right now, yes.
Okay.
And we have a liquor license already in there, and we would be open except for the fact that the work is, needs to be finished.
Okay. That's fantastic. I think that's what we all want to see, is the restaurant open to the public and operational. And so I will make the motion if we can...
I'm going to close it first, and then we'll come back to you on that.
That's fine. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Narducci. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make the motion tonight for us to approve the granted agreement amendment with the condition that we receive from Mr. Narducci a lease agreement or a plan of operation for the restaurant facility prior to the full reimbursement of the amended amount.
Are there any other requests to speak? I do not see anything. Yeah, just wait one second. Something is still wrong, and I don't have any...
Mine's the same one.
Yeah. Yeah.
It won't do anything.
Well, you're guiding it. Yes, it's operating on its own the wrong way. Councilmember Gray?
Mr. Narducci, I've got a couple of questions for you, too. You may want to hang closer for just a minute. Thank you for coming. I wanted to ask you, when was the last time your restaurant was operational?
I think it was last August.
Okay, about a year ago?
Yeah.
And what was the reason that your restaurant had to close?
The guy that was running it didn't have enough money to do it.
Okay.
He was younger. Wow.
So do you own the property?
Yes.
You own the property?
Yes.
So are you going to be running it yourself as your business plan for this?
I'm planning on it, yes.
You're going to be the one opening the restaurant, so you're not going to be turning it over to someone else again?
Not unless I find someone really qualified, so...
Uh-huh.
Really qualified, so...
Okay. So do you feel, have you reached out to other people to see if they will want to manage a restaurant out of that? Do you have any candidates, is my question?
I haven't advertised it, if that's what you're saying. Right now, I've got Jimmy Katsontonas from Goose Loonies. His liquor license is in there right now, and it's legal. We're ready to go, so...
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'm in agreement with Vice Mayor Gonzalez on this, that we really, I think, as a city, because we're using taxpayer monies, you know, money to be able to prop up the business and get it going again, and being a businesswoman myself, I want to see to your success. It's not like I want to throw roadblocks. But at the same time, I think a strong business plan being proposed to the city, this is what I want to do with it. I do have this opportunity. Restaurants have a very high failure rate. You know, there's only like 5% of restaurants that open succeed, so you're in a very vulnerable industry to begin with. So I would like to see a little bit more planning put into this, so that it ensures your success. Not because I'm trying to punish you in any way, because I know how difficult it is, but to ensure your success, I think it's really important that there's a business plan in place. Have you ever worked with the SBA, Small Business Association, with any...
No, but I've run the place since 1977.
Okay. You ran it, and then...
Oh, since '77, I've been the only owner.
Okay. But you've been...
Always successful, paid all my bills, never had any bills that I didn't pay. State, board, everything.
Okay. All right. Well, I appreciate you helping us out here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? I don't have any other requests showing. Seeing none? You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Public hearing, item 8B.
Thank you. So public hearing 8B. Exactly. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, our acting public works director, Zach Meyer, has some background information on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members. Zach Meyer, acting public works director. The item tonight is a vacation, a 10-foot-wide storm drain easement that impacts two properties on 3201 and, or sorry, 3201 and 3221 F Street. There was already a 27-inch storm drain line in this easement that has already been relocated. There's already been a new easement in place for that line. There's currently no city utilities or other known utilities within this 10-foot easement. Property owners within 300 feet have been notified of the proposed easement. We've also had to do zero maintenance in the last five years, so no public funding has been spent on the maintenance for the utilities within the easement for over five years. There was no issues or concerns brought up by other interested departments within the city, and so the easement was done accordance to California Streets and Highway Code, Section 8300, and no petitions have been submitted, and staff recommends approval of the vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mr. Clegg, any comments before we open it up? At this time, I'll open item 8B. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Please come to the mic, identify yourself. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please come to the mic and identify yourself. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Weir?
Thanks, Mayor. Is there any way that I can get a picture of what this specific area is? My screen is not working, so...
We can pull that up momentarily. It'll take us just a minute. It'll take us just a few minutes. We're going to email a presentation of the clerk to put up on the screen.
Is there anything else? It's just a vacation. It's not anything else? Is it adding to a specific area, or... So why, we're combining this? Parcel A and B?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Are we combining parcels A and B, or...
No, I don't believe we're combining parcels. I think the easement impacted two parcels. So the easement impacting both parcels is being... Well, there was a line there. It's already been vacated, and so this action is just vacating an existing easement that no longer has any utilities within it.
Well, it's up in front of me now, so I'll move approval.
Okay. It's come up.
I'll move approval.
Councilmember Weir has moved approval. Is there anybody else who wishes to make a comment? Seeing none, you have a motion? Please cast your votes. Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
I don't have any requests yet. Maybe we're waiting a minute. Councilmember Core?
I don't expect to be up so soon, but, well, today I want to talk about something that's pretty on theme to our conversations that have evolved today. As we're all well aware, we are still in the midst of summer, as well as summer temperatures, but in the month of July, it was over 100 degrees in the city of Bakersfield for all but about six days. And as someone who was born and raised in Bakersfield, has experienced many summers here in Bakersfield, it still is just not, it doesn't get any easier every summer, and this summer felt a little extra brutal, for whatever reason. And I know I don't have that feeling alone. I felt as though that was kind of the topic of conversation in the icebreaker, wherever you go and whoever you chat with. Unfortunately, not everyone and not all of our neighbors have the same refuge that, do not have equitable refuge that we can all seek. And, you know, being trained as a city planner, it just really pains me when we, you know, when I know there are small insignificant things that we can incorporate, strategies that would improve the quality of life for all of our residents, and at least what's in our power. So tonight, I want to direct staff to conduct a study, or maybe we contract the experts, to develop a heat island effect and reduction plan, to include within it a tree management plan. So I'm looking for this study to answer, what is the heat island effect throughout the city of Bakersfield, all of the city? How much heat is being stored within the ground and where? Maybe this is in the form of an interactive map. And let's use studies and plans developed by other cities as inspiration. Other folks have done it very well, and let's employ some of those successful kind of strategies that other cities have developed. Cities much cooler than us have developed heat island effect mitigation plans, as well as tree management plans. Just a small list of cities that have an urban heat island mitigation plan include the city of San Antonio, the city of Sacramento, city of Scottsdale, Kansas City, city of Louisville, as well as the city of Houston. And cities that have urban tree management plans include the city of Fremont, city of Garden Grove, city of Fresno, city of Watsonville, city of San Diego, city of Artesia, city of Napa, city of San Jose, and even the city of Merced. So I think we can join in the good company of some of these other cities to really figure out how we cool down our city. We know that the summers aren't going anywhere. There's tons of benefits to, of course, decreasing the heat island effect, and this is a term used by scientists to document, you know, we might be feeling that it's 115 degrees outside, but because of the material that's used in our buildings, in our sidewalks, on our roads, that heat is being absorbed, and it's not going anywhere. It's being stored right in those roads. So it might be 115 where we're standing, but the ground is going to be 130, 40, 50. It just depends if there's no, that nothing that interrupts that heat being absorbed. And that heat doesn't go anywhere. That's why our nights are just as warm, so we really need to come up with a solution to this. And some of those cooling techniques are, of course, trees, you know? Trees are as fundamental to life as we all know, but the true meaning of life, as someone said, is to plant the trees under whose shade we do not expect to sit. And so I'm hoping we can plant some trees that we don't expect to sit under, but will cool our city for years to come. But that's not the only technique that's employed to cool down cities. There are cool roofs that are utilized. Actually, there was, in Tucson, Arizona, they did a pilot project that, they did a cool roof project, and they used it on a city administrative building, and it resulted in a 50% to 60% reduction in energy use. And they actually saved about $4,000 annually in energy costs on just that one administrative building, and they saved 400 million energy watts, or however it's documented as well, annually. So we were talking about energy earlier. Some of these techniques will also, can also help and have been proven to help other cities in cooling down. Cool roads can also help and are known to kind of mitigate this heat. There's some already very well-established techniques, as well as new techniques that are constantly emerging, where you use a lighter shade of asphalt to reduce that heat. There's so many different types of material that can now be used that actually helps your roads last longer and keep them cool at the same time. So I think we can save our city a penny while keeping our city cool. Now, I wanted to add that the benefits of increasing not only trees in our city, but also cooling down our city are, of course, trees will improve our air quality. We have inherited the worst air quality in the nation for as long as I've lived here. That's my whole life. So in some of those national rankings that we're not as proud of, why not get to work on doing what we can in bringing in more trees that are climate-friendly to us? And the city of Fresno is a great model in their tree management plan. Our climates are similar. They've got tons of, within their management plan, I think we would find a lot of inspiration as to the different species that we could also see here. It lowers your utility bills, and this is well documented in the cities that have incorporated heat island effect mitigation plans. It raises property values, because we're improving the aesthetic of our city, and that's exciting, as well as improving the physical and mental health. When you see greenery or you see plants, that has a proven effect on your improved mental health, but also our residents will be able to walk outside, and it doesn't feel like a punishment to go outdoors. So for all of those reasons, I would like to direct city staff to conduct this study, find the experts. Maybe we consult with some of our neighboring cities... Maybe we consult with some of our neighboring cities to see who they utilize and really get to work on bringing solutions so that we can ease the burden of this extreme heat from our residents. And just, I'll close by saying that Ward 7 had consistent electricity outages in the month of July and August. I was constantly in communication with residents, as well as our energy providers, to figure out what's going on. And of course, you feel helpless when there really are no answers, and you have no idea when your power is going to come back on. So for all those reasons, you know, these issues are not getting any easier, so I hope we can just come up with some solutions, find out what's out there, see what the research is telling us, and really help out our residents across the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate Councilmember Cor's comments regarding the heat island effect. It's a real phenomenon that we all have experienced for far too long. And as we look towards a study, I would also add that we look at, you know, just three or to five simple strategies that we can implement as pilot projects here and now, so we don't have to wait several summers. We can have things ready to go. Councilmember Cor mentioned, there are cities that actually paint their roadways a lighter color in order to try to reduce the effects of heat. We don't have to relearn that lesson. We can see what other cities have done and how effective it's been. Certainly, trees, I used to be the president of the Tree Foundation. We can't plant enough trees in this town. And so it would be cool if we can establish a bold goal, you know, 10,000 trees over the next five years, or something like that, that we can begin to press upon all of our community partners, businesses, residents, to help us meet that goal. But the other thing I was thinking about, and it's been on my heart for quite some time, is I have a number of constituents who are renting apartments or who are living in homes without adequate air conditioning, or their air conditioning systems have failed them. And so it would be really valuable if we look towards how we can strengthen our grant programs that would provide those air conditioning units for some of our renters who are experiencing extreme heat, because it is not only miserable, but it is a matter of life and death for certain sensitive populations. So thank you, Councilmember Cor, for bringing that up. I have just two other items. Number one is illegal dumping remains to be a chronic issue in our community. I'd like us to have a report on some of the updates and some of our strategies moving forward. I would like us to really develop a comprehensive ad campaign regarding illegal dumping, having established, you know, stronger enforcement strategies to get at illegal dumping, and then also an idea that came up one of my meetings with some folks from our impact team, partnering with Goodwill or other thrift stores that receive donations, and having, you know, a mechanism or a space for people to dump their waste that would not be accepted otherwise by a Goodwill or other thrift store, so that our teams can go out and collect those things in one central location. And like to, I thought that was a really wonderful idea, and I think it would work for many people. And then my last item is a constituent asked a question related to Assembly Bill 626. And, Mr. Narducci, this item is for you. This is a bill that was passed that amended the California Health and Safety Code to establish a micro enterprise home kitchen operation, which is a new type of retail food facility that will allow individuals to operate a restaurant in their private residence. And it actually gives cities and counties "full discretion," quote unquote, to authorize these facilities in their jurisdiction. I just wondered, what discretion does the city really have, considering we don't have a public health entity? What really is our discretion, and are there any ordinances that we ought to adopt to allow these to be permissible within the city of Bakersfield? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, Councilmember Cor, did you want to speak again? Councilmember Cor.
I wanted to add a timeline to when we could potentially have this study back, or if we could receive regular updates in seeking out consultants or experts who would be conducting this study for us and in the creation of this plan. I do hope that we can have some solutions or something close to a plan and have some stuff implemented before the next summer, and this not taking us multiple summers, just to build on the Vice Mayor's point as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other requests to speak, so we stand adjourned at 6:44.